Work session to order. Amy Farkas will explain what has happened and why this is a work session and not a meeting. So I call this work session to start. Amy, I'm going to hand it over to you.
So we had a small miscue. And Pennsylvania law requires that we post our agendas 24 hours before we're allowed to have a meeting because if they're not posted, we're not allowed to take any action. Even though for many years before they changed the law, we were allowed to take all the action. So because we did not get the agenda posted on Friday, today's meeting will be a work session. We will hold a special meeting on Friday. We're looking at around noon, we're looking at the time right now, to take action on these plans this evening. So this evening, we'll go over the plans, answer any questions. I apologize that you all are in the audience this evening, but the action will actually occur Friday. That will be a remote meeting with staff in the meeting room here, but planning commission members will be on Zoom and we will make sure that you guys have access to that Zoom link so that you can watch the actual vote then. But if there are questions tonight, I would encourage you to ask them as we have the audience members here, and we'll just treat this as a work session and not take any official action until we can have that meeting on Friday. We need four of you for the quorum. I think we have three now? Are we good? Do we have four? Or we have three? So we're looking at noon. You're good, Dan?
Yep.
And you're good, Bill? So we're good. It'll be 15 to 20 minutes. It'll be on Zoom. We'll get that advertised in the paper tomorrow so we meet the advertising requirement and get the agenda written up and posted as well.
Whoops. Sorry. So I'm happy that you're all here to talk to us. And with that, I'm going to turn it right back to Amy and say, introduce your new road manager.
Yes, so road manager. We're happy to introduce Mr. Ryan Scanlon. He's our newly appointed assistant township manager for Public Works. He comes to us from Ferguson Township. I will let Ryan tell you about his background.
I feel like this is a job interview. Ryan Scanlon, Penn State grad, my master's from Villanova, engineering, geotechnical and stormwater. Worked consulting for a couple of years, arbor corp engineers for eight and a half years. And I was assistant township engineer at Ferguson for eight and a half years as well. And I started here three weeks ago. I'm on my fourth week here, so don't be too harsh on me yet. Kind of learn the process here, but yeah, it's good to be here, so.
Any questions?
Welcome.
Welcome. We won't hold any of that against you. Thank you. Okay, so under normal, we're going to ask for an approval of the minutes.
We'll skip that.
And we're going to skip that. Okay. Since this is a work session, are we going to do public comment?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If there's anything that's on the agenda, please wait till it's the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, now's your time to speak, and then we'll get to it on Friday.
No, they can speak today.
Yes. Anybody? Moving on. Okay, so that brings us to item number five, Park Forest Middle School Lot Consolidation Plan. Is there anybody on staff that wants to take this and kick us off?
All right, so provided in your agenda is the Park Forest Middle School Lot Consolidation Plan. This is tax parcel 18003061A. It's about 18.5 acres and it's zoned R1, your rural residence. And then the adjacent parcel 18016259B, that's about 7.4 acres, and it is zoned R3, median residence. So the plan proposes to consolidate both tracts into a single parcel totaling approximately 25.9 acres. So the site I have highlighted outlined with the red box, we have Valley Vista, as you can see the main corridor, Surferville Park highlighted here. Little do many people know, it's the school district owns property within this area. I think right now it's been used for a Schlumberg Park area, however, there is a significant portion of those that is the school district with that just highlighted up here. We have the R1 highlighted in the yellow orange district color, and then the R3 parcel that is directly adjacent to Valley Vista. So the applicant's proposing to consolidate these two into one. It does, the consolidation would not alter the underlying zoning districts. There are just two zoning districts on this parcel, and they would need to comply with those regulations for each district. As background info, they have submitted a land development plan, they've submitted a conditional use application for this site, as well as the lot consolidation plan. Those other applications are currently being reviewed by staff or working with the applicant, back and forth, trying to get a good complete submission, meeting all the township regulations. But the lot consolidation was good, ready to go, and the applicant wished that it moved forward. So this is what we have in front of you right now. We have the applicant here as well, they're engineer. If there are any questions planning commission may have about this, keep in mind, this is just a lot consolidation plan. There will be a lot more coming, including a conditional use period. So if there are any questions, we're happy to answer them.
So I'm going to start off with, are there any concerns from staff about this proposed action that will be voted on on Friday?
Not for law consolidation.
Does anybody on the board have any concerns about this first lot consolidation step of this general project? All right.
Mine's more of a process question.
Okay, go ahead and ask.
Mine is more, this is the, this is the space where we visited, is this correct? Yeah, we went and looked at the big plan. Yeah. Well, that's my question about the process. I know in the past, we've talked about conditional use not being like an ideal scenario. So why would we?
Proposition of this type of zoning district, as long as there are certain conditions and things that are reviewed when that plan comes in, to ensure that this use does not have those adverse impacts on the neighboring properties. And that's really what we gain with the conditional use processes. It's the schools being permitted in R1, they are permitted by conditional use. So if there were issues that, as we review this plan on encroachment, if there was a neighbor, neighborhood directly next to it, having the.
Thank you very much for your time. Sorry, I'm so used to it being you. Thank you very much for your time. Sorry, I'm so used to it being you.
Do their presentations today? Yeah, do you want them to do their presentation?
Yeah, let's have them do that.
Okay, fine. All right, that's what I was asking. All right, come on. I was trying to get us out earlier.
I really didn't have a presentation. I think all of the summary that Jenna gave was accurate in what we were doing. My name is Todd Smith, I'm with ELA Group. With me is Dave Parmally, he's with the school district. And it is just a law consolidation plan to remove the property line between the two and create one parcel property.
Yep. And everybody understands that that's so that they don't have to deal with setbacks between two different properties, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Okay.
Okay, good. All right. Do I have consent from the board that we can move on?
Yes.
Let's move on. Okay. Thank you very much for coming and showing up and speaking so eloquently on.
Thank you.
This. Okay, so we have, is this one going to be yours, the collegiate? Okay, so now I know who to direct her. Okay, so collegiate station subdivision plan, again, we are unable to take any actions, but Jenna, will you kick this off for us, please?
Yep. So we have tax parcel 18021010L, it's about .4 acres, and it's in planned community district. This is your top trees area. So the plan proposes the subdivision of an existing condominium into individually owned fee simple lots. There is no development proposed with this plan, it is purely just taking a block of homes and two townhomes and dividing them up into individually owned properties. So the area that we are looking at is highlighted in red here. We have two of the townhomes in the blue numbers at the top, and then we have 13 single family homes that would be created with this subdivision of this association. And we have a little more detail on the parcels involved in this. We have addressed the stormwater concerns with that condominium association who would be responsible for taking that on, that is all been addressed, and the township engineers happy with that. It will be taken care of by the association. They will maintain that regardless of this fee simple.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered, oh, can I ask?
Yeah, kill for, yeah.
Were there other responsibilities that will shift at all from HOA to the?
Condominium Association.
So in other words, like the street maintenance and everything? None of that will, that'll all still be sidewalk clearing and all that stuff?
Yeah. Tony Fratell, Pantera Engineering, we did the original project for the development of, of course, was set up as a condominium association. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The overall project is, it's actually two and a half acres. Not sure where the .4 came for, came from. And the two townhomes that Jenna mentioned will not be, they are not being subdivided. They are part of a separate condominium. And what happens in the Village of Penn State, there are sub-associations associated with the different forms of development. There's townhomes out there, there's apartments, and they all have sub-associations. Collegiate Station was a sub-association. And then there's an overall master association. And that master takes care of like the big picture items that everybody contributes to, like the stormwater ponds. They all run off from, all the areas go to the stormwater ponds. But then the sub-associations take care of the amenities within their little area. So if there's like walls, I think there's a couple of walls in Collegiate Station that they, they were taking care of, that they will continue to take care of. But the big stuff, they will still, the individual lot owners will still be responsible for contributing to that overall association for the stormwater stuff and the big picture stuff. The small, the small items that like sidewalks and lawn grass and that sort of thing, then that becomes lot owner responsibility, so.
So any other questions?
Why did it stop with those particular units not have more? Like why the specific ones?
Those were the only ones that actually were, that had the single family homes as a condominium. The rest of the homes down the line there are just single family homes. What happened was originally, this area was going to be, you look at the four, see the four homes there, I call them the quad unit. They were going to put those the whole way across there. They made, they built four, and this is 15, 18, 15 years ago, they built four. Market didn't support that, so they said, hey, we're putting single family homes in here, we'll just make a condominium out of it. That's what they did. And now the homeowners are saying, hey, we're the same as everybody else in here. Can we own our property and have our own lot like everybody else? So that's the request.
Okay, so do we have a representative for all of these properties in the audience?
Yeah.
Okay. If you might step up to the mic here so that I can get a couple of questions. Because what I'm, just for everybody's understanding, when you're switching from a condo association to a fee simple, that means typically in a condo association, like with townhomes, the outside of the building would be owned by the condominium association and the inside would be owned by the owner. Fee simple just means you own everything that tied to that land. So the, being the lawyer and having gone through property, we explain property as a bundle of sticks and we can take every single stick out. So what's happening here is when this was originally created, they took sticks out to make it a condominium association. So what I want to make sure from the homeowners or the condominium association members who want to become homeowners, that they, that this is a joint effort, that there's nobody being left out, and that there's no other impacts to any of the other individuals that currently have property. So just, just a clarification, you're saying that, that this quad setup, they're not associated, or was it, which, which?
So the two townhomes that Jenna mentioned, they are part of a separate association, the duplexes, sorry, these are part of a separate association. There are duplexes that go off over here, they are part of that association. These four, these four, these are single family homes. I call them the quad because they share a drive.
Okay.
But they are single family homes, they will be divided into single family lots. And to, I think, answer your question further, all, all 13 homeowners will be required to sign the plan. So there, we have a, we have a sheet on there with signature blocks for everybody in the development to sign the plan, so.
Okay. That makes me feel a little bit better. Then the next question is, is there any funding that will be lost from dissolving this condominium association to like the stormwater, or is that being captured through, through other association fees and dues? Or was that always separate?
Hi, Andrea Pandoffe, 1750 Woodlet Drive. Could you repeat the question, please?
So, so my question is, is as far as this condo association goes, is there any funding element from this condo association that goes to the maintenance of any other properties within the whole entire development? I just want to make sure every, every, yeah?
No, our 13 units, our 13 units, we're a condo association, we're separate from the other sub-associations within the Village of Penn State, and we have our own funds that will remain funds of these mutual homeowners under the HOA association.
Okay.
So will the funds, will the funds be switched over from what you currently have to the new association?
Yes, we have a reserve, and we will pull those funds forward. We won't need as big of a reserve as a homeowner's association as we do as a condo association, so some of those funds will go back to the homeowners.
Okay.
Because we'll have excess reserve.
Now, you had another question?
Well, I was just saying, I don't know that, I wasn't sure you answered. So in other words, what he was asking about the stormwater or other, I remember there was like this big controversy.
The stormwater, that's all handled at a master association level. Our stormwater goes into a basin that is the responsibility of the master association of the Village of Penn State.
Your funds go to cover that. You have funds that won't cover that.
Or that's coming out?
We pay fees to the master association.
That's the question.
The town, each individual property owner is paying fees, okay.
Yes.
One other question, there was some issues early on, I recall, and I, we live, I live there, I live in that community, and, and it has to do with setbacks. And are there issues with setbacks being individual homes versus, or just all the same? It doesn't matter now?
So in the planned community district?
Yes.
Setbacks are established at the time of the land development plan.
Okay.
So even though this was as a whole, they still had to follow setbacks. Now they have different setbacks, but they still have setbacks. And it can be one foot, five feet, as long as those are established at the time of this land development plan. Because if you take, I mean, you can't see it, I can't see it from here, the side yard setback for them are four feet.
Right.
So other subdivisions within the Village of Penn State are five feet, some are 10 feet. So it just depends on how they establish that to make it work.
So it will, whatever was established at the beginning is going to be maintained now?
Whatever is established right here will be maintained.
Okay, so it's getting reestablished, I understood.
Okay. I swear you have a question wrong. You had something on the other side.
No, I just wanted to, no, I'm good.
Okay. Any questions?
I guess it's worth, I'll just introduce myself also, I'm working on the project, I'm Kristen Long from McQuaid Blasco.
So to the. Hi, Kristen.
Hi. To the legal question and point, there will be a termination and conversion document recorded once the proposal is approved. All of the owners will be signing that document, and then there will be new documents for the new homeowners association to replace the documents for the condo association. And this is only working because there are 13 owners, and they're all on the same page.
So I know Kristen by, by reputation, you've actually done some work with me and for me. So since you're handling the legal side of this, that makes me feel a lot better, so.
Well, that's nice to hear.
Okay, so.
Anybody to answer any other questions?
Does anybody have any other questions?
Will you have to create special easements for those since they're all in one, the quad?
So we, there, there will be easements for the homeowners association to be able to maintain the shared features within the quad in particular, and that consists of the retaining wall, as well as there's a, there's, there's a sidewalk within the quad. And, and yes, that is contained within the documentation that has been drafted.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns from the board? I'm going to kick it back to staff. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from staff?
No.
Okay. And Nicole, you, there's no issues whatsoever that you can see from this from an enforcement side?
No.
Okay.
I think to some extent, it's, it's almost a corrective measure because there's confusion. As, as it was explained to me when I was consulted initially, you know, this, the vast majority of this development looks exactly like others around them, and then when units are sold, buyers are looking at this and saying it's a condo as opposed to what it looks like and what everything else around it looks like, so.
Very confusing.
I have to admit, I was against this until I started looking at the properties and started scratching my head, so. But thank you for leaving any issues. Can we take a straw hole that's not binding on anyone?
No straw holes. You want to vote straight out on everything?
I do!
No, save it for Friday. Friday just vote away.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By my account, we have five minutes left for the long stuff, so.
It is deceiving. It does look long, however, I don't anticipate any discussions amongst you all, reflections about what is in front of you. I did not expect any of you to show up today with all of this spread. So we have been working on finishing the trend reports for the comprehensive plans. So these reports are here to help elected officials and planning commissions as you all work on the future land use map that will be coming, I believe for Patton, we are looking at January for a joint board and planning commission meeting. So that's kind of the deadline for these reports. There is a lot of data in them. We have all different topics. So the first one that we have included essentially the layout of what we have in there, how we imagine this timeline moving, because I believe we already presented survey reports to you. Now we have these trend reports. And then I even went a step further, I did the one for each primaries for each individual municipality so we could just understand where they are sitting in comparison to the region. So Patton Township's fact sheet that includes your units in Patton Township, median income, household size, median age for Patton Township. We have the grant, we have median home value, your population projections, we include data about your ag preserve lands within Patton Township. So there's some data in here solely for Patton Township on that one feature. If you do not have time to get through all of these before that is January, definitely look at this one. So then we start with the land use. For those who are not map oriented, we have summarized the land use items just in comparison over time of how development has occurred in the center region. And then we also have the maps that our GIS specialist did for us. And then we also have the maps that our GIS specialist did for us documenting, you know, the regional growth, boundaries, work, is doing what it was intended to do. So there's some stuff in here, what acreage have we been losing, what have we been getting a lot of, et cetera. Number two, this is the housing trends analysis. This is a very long and big one. I'm kind of recommending to the planning conditions and elected officials, you know, if you have a topic that you care a lot about, that you want to just focus on that one trend report, do it. And hopefully, there's enough of you with different interests that all these trend reports can be covered, so, representing the township as we work through these future land use map exercises. But the housing units, it includes a lot of affordability data. It includes historical development patterns over time. We even have in there from RE/MAX, we have vacancy and student housing vacancy, multifamily housing vacancy. So that is included within this report as well. The demographics, so this is another long one. However, it's actually fascinating. I think it's page two or three. Right now, I guess the fourth county, more people are dying than we are having births. This is the first time that we're kind of seeing that trend occur. So that would, I would say is the most fascinating graph in all of this, if I had to pick my favorite. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of stuff in here, and not, all of this could not have been done. CBICC worked very closely with us because they just went through their strategic plan and all of that work. So they did provide their data to us, no question asked. So a lot of that stuff can flow into us, however, their data focused on the county. And so we now have US county and then center region as well. So we essentially just added on to their work to get this data for center regions. There's a lot of good data in the demographics. Open space, preserve land, farmland, so this is all the case properties ASA was permanently being preserved, contract, et cetera. So all of those numbers are included in the open space, preserve land, farmland trend report. Transportation is another fascinating one for me, seeing these heavily trafficked corridors. So the one thing I am seeing from population projections, it appears that center region, Penns Valley, and Nittany Valley region are kind of the only regions growing. That's where we're seeing a lot of the development, that's where we're seeing a lot of these pressures, mostly because of these corridors that we see happening. And it appears that the rest of the county is pretty much staying stagnant. So we're seeing a lot of pressure through this process, and that's the beauty of this regional plan, and getting input from Penns Valley, Nittany Valley on how our decisions are impacting that. Economic development, this is a, this is probably the only one where it focuses solely on county data. We cannot dive any deeper than the county when it comes to a lot of this stuff. However, we do acknowledge the center region is kind of that economic engine for the majority of the county. So there is a lot of very good information here on job types, industry types, what's leading. On the first page that you're seeing here, it has the location portion. So this is essentially where we have an edge over the national numbers when it comes to a certain job or industry. So that, those, there's two of those in that one. Very good information on what we have here, backing up what CBICC has pointed out and what they have in their strategic plan as well. Included also in this one is the, again, RE/MAX data on vacancies and rents when it comes to industrial, retail, commercial property aspect that is also in this report specifically. Just so we understand what's going on in the region. Fascinating enough, I hear from realtors that they have a ton of clients who want industrial space, and industrial is the highest vacancy in this report. So then, going back to the realtors, what are they looking for in industrial? Small scale, 30,000, 40,000 square feet. All we have are big, huge warehouses that they're sitting in. So it's giving us some insights on what we have, what we are looking for, and how they are necessarily aligned. So I recommend to all that you need, we are, since we are short on staff, we try just to get these out as quickly as possible. If there are items, something you see is not aligned, something is missing. So when we provided the upcoming development to the center region planning commission, like Jenna, we forgot, I forgot, ag tourism. And that's like a big aspect of what we have here is our assets. We have ag tourism. We have these natural amenities that people love to recreate at. It's a big tourism engine. So we will be posting updates to these as we receive that feedback from our planners. They're still reviewing this as well. But we're just trying to get as much information as we can as we move forward to the future land use map exercise, and hopefully giving you all informed information so you can make your decisions. Really impressive.
It is.
Anyway, I wish I could spend more time on that idea.
I will, often.
At all times. I think we're looking at January.
January, yeah.
Light reading over the office.
Amazing.
So that's interesting. Everybody's looking for industrial, but they're looking for smaller industrial. So, you know, are we going to have to find policies that somehow encourage subdividing same building for, for something like that?
It's also interesting to see that our housing stock is almost split 50/50 between owner occupied and rentals. And wondering what the short-term rental market, when we get more data from that, will find as well.
Do you expect any changes based on the projected, I guess, I don't know if this is the right way to put it, but there's supposedly, you know, going to be cutbacks from the federal budget to state and local. Do you expect anything to affect us there? Or is it already affecting us?
So I think it's hard to say. I think where it's going to affect mostly is going to be Penn State. Obviously, they depend upon that. And also CADA to a certain extent. But CADA has positioned themselves well over the last couple of years, so they've been riding out. Mostly for them, it's the state budget isn't being passed, but they've been riding that out okay. But I think it's going to be something we're going to have to monitor because it is something that will impact us as well.
Yeah, I was just seeing, in complete recovery, just wondering.
Well, the other major area that I've seen us being impacted in is this, is through the MPO. So federal highway funds, a lot of projects are just being canceled for, for reasons. Some come back, a renewed name, but, but a lot of plans, a lot of things have been canceled that we had gotten grants for and then were suddenly clawed back. So, so that, that affects not only us, that affects everywhere around us as well. So not everybody can afford to build a bridge, you know? So, all right. So this is all really, really, really great information. Now, what we need to do is digest it and basically figure out what we want to do and what policies and trends and maps we can move forward with this. Because like you said, if we're 50/50 on owner occupied and rentals, you know, the next, like you said, the next piece of that is, okay, are these occupied rentals or are these non-occupied rentals? So, and what do we do? Okay. Does anybody have any other things that they would like to address since we're, it's just us for a work session? Or do we want to get out of here? Because we have to come back Friday, virtually.
Virtually.
Yes, you can all come Friday virtually.
Okay. Since we're not doing a motion to close, then I call us to close.